I call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is August first, two thousand twenty-three. It is seven P M. I will start with a roll call from the far end.
I seem so far away from you folks. Lee J. Felbin, Town Planner.
All right.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
Rich Genon. We do have a quorum. We have four. And on the agenda tonight, we have approval of the agenda. We have approval of the minutes of July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. We have a period of public comment. We have a public hearing on Fitzpatrick Development. We have two pending items, Glencoe Heights Subdivision Sketch Plan and Fitzpatrick Development. We will hear from the town planner, and then we will all go home. Well, you all will go home before we do. I need a motion.
Make a motion for the approval agenda.
Second that.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Will we accept it, Rick?
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to approve as except as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. The next item is public comment. If you are a member of the public and you have a comment of about anything related to the planning board or the land use ordinance that is not on the agenda, now is the time for you to bring that item forward. And? Yes, sir. Please state your name. Richard Lessard. Thank you. Oh, yes, during the public hearing, yes, you will. In fact, the public will have a chance. The board will not. We ask all of our questions afterwards. Okay, any other comments? Okay, moving right on to the public, public hearing. Fitzpatrick Development Site Plan and Conditional Use Review Proposed Development Includes One Ten Thousand Square Foot Warehouse, One Four Thousand Eight Hundred Square Foot Contractor Building With A Residential Dwelling Unit, And A Seven Unit Campground And An Associated Parking Accessory Area. B D F Holdings LLC Is The Owner And Applicant Represented By Ben Fitzpatrick And Christopher Taylor Of Sibago Technics Is The Applicant's Agent. The Property Is Located On Heavy Hammer Lane Tax Map For Lots Twenty-three And Twenty-three C In The A R District. If anybody has questions, Mr. Fitzpatrick is right there, and I'm sure he'll be. And you must be Mr. Taylor? Okay. At any rate, the applicant is here with his representative. If you want to make a brief presentation.
And just make sure the green light's on on the mic. Perfect.
For the record, Chris Taylor was Sibago Technics applicant or the agent for the applicant. Thank you, Board, for having us back again tonight. We made a presentation at last, at the last meeting for completeness. Brief summary of the project for the public is that is an existing subdivision that created Heavy Hammer Lane off of Route one eleven. The proposed application includes a ten thousand square foot warehouse building as well as a forty-eight hundred square foot building that would be a mix of commercial office space, residential dwelling unit, and some warehouse type space in the rear. We're also proposing a seven unit campground, which is located in the center of the site. We've designed some stormwater features around it, water and septic hookups to accommodate the development. We've made an application to the State D P for a SLOTA application or site law application, and that is pending. We're working with the D P and addressing comments and are waiting that permit. We've included some landscaping design as part of it to meet some screening requirements. We had some lighting for the campground and around the buildings. We've also added a light out at the front driveway of Heavy Hammer. At the request of the board to provide a little bit more lighting at the entrance. That was back in at the sketch plan and back in November. And I think that's a pretty brief summary of what we're proposing, and we'll step back.
Does the public have any questions? Please step, step forward and state your name into the microphone. Yes, sir.
My name's Richard Lessard. I have.
Is the mic on?
Yes. I can see it. Yeah.
I have a question regarding access. Currently, the turning lane ends, oh, I just couple hundred yards from Heavy Hammer Lane. Presumably, these will be fairly large vehicles pulling over into what is now the passing lane to turn left. My opinion is that turning lane should be extended. My opinion, all the way down. However, certainly at a minimum to to Heavy Hammer Lane. And I, I live just two lots over. And I can tell you, people are crazy on that road, all right? When I pull to turn left into my driveway, I get, I gotta watch what's going on behind me because they just are not paying attention. And, you know, big vehicle, okay, what size vehicle you have, no one's paying attention. So I would ask the town to either petition the state, require whatever you gotta do to get that turning lane extended.
Okay. I know we, we cannot extend it without the state's approval.
Right. I understand. It's a state, really. Certainly, we can put some, but put it out there. I've emailed the state about it. You know? Yes, fine. Thank you. That's it.
Ben, you guys have talked with DOT. Have they said anything?
When they fixed the, the road and did all that, and they ran a town meeting. I was right when I bought the property and I went down there and I told them about the future. But we didn't even have the first building yet. I've done the whole woods at the time, and they said that they couldn't make it in my traffic flow because we didn't know what we were gonna do. So, and they didn't really speak as to at what point they would change it. But I'm sure once we have a number of traffic flow, they, they might. I just said to my engineers, when people come over, I make sure that if they're left wing or working. Because, yeah, doesn't mean that it's a busy road. Luckily, buses and campers have a pretty high up lane, but I agree, it's a, it's a thing that could be. I would love it, and I tried when they weren't open, but I guess that we ended up with that, and I didn't know what we were gonna do. It's been a long road figuring it out.
Yeah, that's. Unfortunately, having a limited number of vehicles, granted, they're large, but having a limited number is not gonna help. The state's gonna look at it and go, you've, you're looking at what, fourteen trips a day, maybe?
No, that's, that's a big conversation we have is what our trips per day are gonna be. And they're small and they're not peak hours. So there are two big, two big factors in our travel is that we're not open at nine, closing at five kind of difference. It's actually something that I had to find a business for this property to have low traffic flow. But, yeah, I wanted to say about that would be a fine idea, but I think they're gonna wanna see what kind of traffic I produce.
So can, can the town just voice its opinion that this should be extended, or?
I think that would be a selectmen's issue. Because we have less than none in terms of being able to go to another state agency. That is something that the, that the Board of Selectmen would, would have to take care of to make it official.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much for your question, though. And it's, it's a valid point. I, I've asked the question myself, you know?
I.
Especially if you're, if you're cutting across and making the left going out through there.
Yeah, and I'm afraid it's gonna take a big accident before, before anything. I've had some very close calls, so I'm very concerned.
Well, I know that's what happened on Hill Road that caused the traffic like to go in. There were a couple of fatalities in a short period of time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
So I'm Giselle Dubey. I abut this property. So I guess I have some additional questions. So originally, when we talked, I think it was back in November, you were proposing nine sites, nine to twelve sites. So, and they were supposed, supposedly the larger R V situation. Is that still the plan? Or are we now talking campground with smaller trucks with the back, you know, tow campers with wheels, that kind of situation?
We're currently not excluding small vehicles. We only have seven sites so that we could fit bigger vehicles. They are all designed for a forty-five foot vehicle.
Okay.
So, so our goal is still, that's our initial advertisement, but we, you know, we're not gonna exclude anyone right away, other than a tents.
And truckers will be allowed and their trucks will be allowed to run throughout the night?
No.
Okay.
No, there's gonna be hours. There'll be hours to generators. We've actually already are creating, talking to website people and creating a list of reports. So no, there'll be hours set for those kind of things because people will be sleeping in it. So they also don't wanna do that. And truckers, actually, at the campground, so truckers are not.
Okay. And, and just since you've cleared the property, the, the sound from Route one eleven has magnified already just for a butters, and so that's part of the concern. I see you put the landscaping. I know my nephew, who was here the last time, the Lebikes, they asked for some type of fencing of the area between or at the edge of the property so that people staying on your location do not come or trespass onto the property of the other part. I have a bond, so I now have to start looking at liability insurance. You have people walking through the woods because I think it was your father or someone at the time mentioned having walking trails. I'm assuming some folks are gonna have dogs. They're gonna walk their dogs. So we just wanna make sure that we're not carrying the burden of the liability. So if there can be some type of a barrier, fencing, whatever to, at the edge of that property line, that would be helpful for us. We also, I was just telling Redford, there's duty that goes on in that backyard, and I think it comes probably from your location. I don't know who's doing it. I do have a picture of a steel plate hanging up because there's no burn behind this property. We have young kids who ride their four wheelers out back there. So I wanna make sure there's a stipulation that this isn't going to be a shooting range or archery or anything like that because we have that situation currently going on. And I believe it comes from your property. So.
I hear all.
Yeah, so you here are, right? Yeah. And we actually had a gang warning show up in the house accusing my husband of some fraudulent activities when in fact he wasn't even home that day. So, um, I just wanna make sure that that's addressed and acknowledged to by the board because there are stuff, things going on on that property that are questionable. And I just don't want to have that continue or invited situations. So. And I don't know what we put in place to.
I have a question. So where the activity is taking place now is where the proposed campground?
I suspect that's where it is.
That's where it's coming.
Right. And there's actually on the edge of the property, I can show you a picture on my phone. It's a frame, wooden frame, and there's a steel plate, and that's pulled, pulls through that.
So it's the edge of the property between the proposed development and your property line?
And we have a walking trail and a four wheeler trail that goes behind it. So we've actually had to tell the children to stay in the lower section. I mean, I'm talking kids, ten, fourteen year old kids running four wheelers.
So Ben, do you know anything about that? I'm not saying you're a part of this name. Do you know that that's taking place?
Does the board want us to address these comments now or do we?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna wait and, and address it after the public hearing.
And then my other question is, with this going in place, how many more acres do you have left that's gonna be undeveloped or developed in the future?
We're trying to write that off because you covered a lot of stuff, so writing that down is what the board wants. Yeah, no, and I'm certainly not the result of a bunch of shooting going on. I did go out once this summer and shoot with some friends.
No, these are semi-automatics, whatever they are, because it's like boom, boom, boom. I'm like, given the cost of the ammunition and everything these days, I'm like, somebody has some time and some money to spend, but so, but, yeah.
I just wanted to address that one real quick because we did go out there with handguns once this summer, so a lot of shooting. I know I'm actually a young man on New World issues a lot, and he has assault rifles and things. I don't have any of that stuff on me, so. So I'm not up there doing that. I've seen the plate. I've also seen chairs for hunters on the property. That's just stuff that's kind of been there.
Yeah, and my husband hunts, so we know. There's people who come in from the pipeline and, or the power line and all of that, and they do that, but this is clearly coming from that area of some sort. So I don't know who goes in there and does the shooting. I've been tempted because I work from home, so there's gonna be a day I will go or I will, I've called the sheriff a couple of times, but.
I got a phone call one day from my dad, and he said the sheriff showed up at our property. I was away, and they were looking for gunshots.
Yeah, because I've called, but by the time the sheriff gets there.
I'm sure he's getting done.
And it's a semi. It, it sounds like an AK, whatever, AK forty-seven. It is like boom, 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 boom. And it's probably twenty minutes, thirty minutes at most. I do know the guy that you are talking about, but he shoots behind against a berm.
Yeah.
It's the house that sits back from us, but.
As I said, they're doing the project on that road right now.
Yeah, so, um, but again, I was just curious about of this larger parcel, once this development or project is in place, how much is remaining and what is the intent? When we first talked in November, I think it was a ten thousand square foot warehouse, you had to have shower facilities and bathrooms and all of that to make that campground qualify, correct?
Yeah.
Is that still the intent for that ten thousand square foot building? And then the other building was going to be, I think your father might have parked his R V, and then we're gonna be living quarters upstairs for him. Is that still?
Yeah, yeah, really, nothing's changed since I started. It's been a while, other than I lost a lot of the outdoor area I was gonna use. I sold a lot of that. So pretty much nothing's changed since I walked.
So you sold the lot next to the current building that's there?
Yes.
So that's probably behind you or. Um, okay. And what's going in there? Do you have any idea? You talked about it being like storage.
Yeah, it's, I sold to a private person now, and they'll be before the board too, I'm sure. Because I know they want that gig going, trying to get going, and we're not going, so.
Have you guys seen anything for that proposed?
Not yet. Not yet.
I don't think so.
We're, we're aware that, that it's under discussion, but we haven't seen anything yet.
Okay. And then we talked about lighting to make sure that the lighting is that weren't enough, these massive towers to disturb the rest of the neighborhood. Is that still?
Yeah, giving the good lights and their nice little flowers.
Okay.
So, yeah, same thing. People are gonna be sleeping in there. There are your headlights and a couple on the side of the building. They just park them up. Yeah, very expensive lane, lane in there. It's making sure that nothing's leaving the property.
And you also were suggesting a dumping station? For the R Vs will be there as well? So it's a holding tank or is it full septic, full blown septic or?
Full septic.
Full septic?
Yeah.
I guess I gotta get my water tested before I do anything. Okay. And this is day, daily camping, or is it going to be weekly camping?
We were gonna send a max on it in two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah, we're, we don't have a lot of things for them to do other than everything that's around us, so. Yeah, they're designing as a short stay. Please stop. Wait in there.
And are you adding or gonna be advertising on those K O A R V campsite applications? In that house?
Yeah, that's kinda, I think, one direction that I mean, the website, we're talking about. They got all kinds of plans. I have to pop up on these things, but getting on trap people that set up travels for people, it's gonna be my goal because I'm gonna be looking for that long distance person. People would be getting those that are doing big trips.
And will there be somebody in attendance twenty-four seven at this location so that if there are issues, that there's a representative we can approach?
Yeah, it's nice to, I'm not a business pro way, I'm a small, you know, I'm, I've been your neighbor forever. I grew up in Wisconsin, so he knows it all to me. My dad's gonna be there living in that small building, so he's a person on site. All the things will go through the website. And then I'll be there, you know, periodically check on things. Someone's gonna be looking in the bathroom, Steve and I on the bathroom, so there'll be people there daily. And, yeah, and my business plan is to keep my prices high, to keep the river out. You know, we keep a clean, clean place. Yeah.
So, and trash, because as you can see, then in Portland, you have campers and you go to these campsites and who's trash and who's gonna be responsible for maintaining all of that?
Actually, in our plans as well. We have Toriano is a big name right now. When a, when a trucking comes and takes the car and dumps her, but we'll be dumped there. And we'll have rules about staying off the grass and so that's what.
And I'm worried more about what's going into the woods.
Right, and I wanna encourage people because they're coming and visiting a state that we love, so there's gonna be a lot of signs, so be a good camper, be a good neighbor as you visit our state in the woods. Yeah, I think anyone that's gonna journey out of their R V and take a, a nature path, we will be respectful of it, and there'll be signs to put, and have your animal. There's already rules about leashes. So, you know, people are in the woods, that's something we're gonna stay away from. I don't imagine my demographic of people coming, it's gonna be spending a lot of time in the woods.
Are you going to put markers as to what's delineating your property versus the other landowners?
Yeah, we'll, we'll touch on that. It's got a lot of the buyer questions.
So that's one of the things, right?
Now, we've talked about it.
So we really wanna avoid them coming into or trespassing on the land.
Right, right. Yeah, I.
And like I said, I know Ken Leback requested fencing, and I know he was part of one of your wards. I think he's part of the school board where they were required to put fencing. When they did the Arundel School softball field, they were required to put in some type of fencing. And that was a mandate from the, I guess, from the board. So that those people going to that facility couldn't cross over onto the landowners property. Well, I think some, some type of fencing or delineation needs to be part of the plan.
Yeah, so I've been working a lot with some people in Kennegong Field and some trails for the Kennegong Land Trust. And talks with them, it's like any, any trail, if it's well marked and you have margins on every ten feet, every tree, people don't need to trail. It's on the list of rules. If you stay on the trails or on private property, you just note that, you know, every battery is private property and stay on trail, and that's a major rule, and you deal with rulers as they come. Also, there's nowhere that we intersect like a major trail of yours, so people won't wanna wander onto that. And if there, if you did have a major trailer came on and off my property, then let's put up a sign, private property, don't leave this trail.
Well, we're that.
And then let everyone know this is on your own private property, trails only.
So we're that piece of metal that that's hanging is right on the edge of the trail of our trail.
Okay.
So whoever's shooting, he's right on the edge. You look right behind that, and there's the trail that takes you out back actually to, that trail will take you towards the pipe, the power line, and it will take you to Christie and Bill Reinkle, who are my other nieces and nephews, so.
Yeah, I suggest hanging a sign. I don't, like I said, you know.
But that burden's now coming on us.
Well, no, because I'm gonna be marking my trails, and my property has been flagged multiple times. It's easy to see in my trail. They're gonna be very well marked. And it'll be well traveled by walkers, bikers, and people hopefully. Walking won't be as much. I'll be out there with my dog a lot. But making sure it's clean and nice. But, yeah, that's, that's the goal, is to make it very clear that you are on a trail with white places or yellow places. You're on private property, don't use the trail.
And I think you probably should have some type of signage, a lot of lights, because we can see packs of coyote crossing our paths. So you probably wanna have a full moon or have some type of monitoring for your.
Hi, early morning.
They've been out.
Sure.
So just, normally, we don't see them as close to our property. We hear them, but these have been right.
A lot of big developments, and this is, luckily, I'm, I'm keeping the wood, and there's so many commercial things through this land. So luckily, I'm keeping the woods. I love the woods. I love my blueberry patches out there, so, yeah, I totally agree. It's too bad that there's so much huge development going on, and animals don't have anywhere left to go and to get scratching, so that's a good comment, thank you.
I guess, as long as it sticks. I mean, you're doing seven. We're not back to the nine or the twelve. Right? You've reduced it to seven.
I guess we were just hoping to go back then, but yeah, seven, since Kaylee came up with this great plan, we've been at seven, and it fits nicely, so. And then I'll be back before the board if I want to. So you're here with them.
And then.
And I have twenty-six acres left to expand on to, but right now, it's just what it's there.
Is that towards the backside of where the two buildings are, the twenty-six acres?
I mean, it's, yeah, this twenty-six acres, that's what you see there is like two or three acres. So there are twenty-six acres between you and that, but there's a lot of it there. And it is like that.
And again, you're gonna have somebody on site twenty-four seven.
I, yeah, I mean.
I, I'm just also worried about the transient folks that once they know about this location, you're gonna have a lot of transient people possibly coming here. So that's just one of the big things that I'm concerned. They're behind Walmart. They're behind over here.
I see.
They're all over. So the minute you, they find out about this, it's not gonna be uncommon. They're in Andrews Road right now, so that's my concern is the twenty-four seven.
Yeah, I don't want those people to have been there either.
But if it's not attended, it's the option, availability.
Well, then I'll be getting better reviews, and we'll hear about it. My dad will be there. We have cameras on site. So we'll know if there's, if there's river out there. Like I said, I'll be over there tracking off things, walking the trail. I got my dogs in the truck every day, so.
And is this seasonal or is this year round?
No, very seasonal. It's actually a short season compared to most campgrounds because I have a plan to use that building for storage and.
So your season's what, May to October, or?
Yeah, and then May, Labor Day to Memorial Day, Labor Day. The past, right? So we have it.
Love being family.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments from the public? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing at seven twenty-seven. The next item on the agenda is Glencoe Heights Subdivision Sketch Plan. The applicant is proposing an eleven lot subdivision on Jasper Lane. Tax map one lot eighteen. The parcel is fifty-one point four nine acres in the R three and R four zones. The plan includes ten duplex lots and one single family home. The project will have nine hundred plus or minus feet of reconstructed roadway and an additional two thousand feet of new road. Colleen Campbell is the property owner and Dempsey LLC is the applicant represented by Thomas Gillis. And this, we were out here. And this, we were out here earlier today, we had a sketch walk. I was impressed, I don't know what to tell you, yeah, I just, the land itself was impressive.
I am too, uh, that was the first time I really walked, it was, uh, when we laid out the center line. And when I got out back there and swatted all those mosquitoes away, I took a breath and said, wow, this is a pretty nice piece of land. Um, so, I mean, you saw it and I think we have a good, good plan now after the last sketch plan, I think, uh. What we had first proposed was not the best for this, and I think you guys pointing us in the cluster. Direction was the, the ultimate, you know, it, it's really coming together. Um, and I know a lot of the stuff, uh, Jim's gotta do, of course, he reminded us. Three times he was on vacation this week and he made a special trip down to help us out and. I told him there'd be something extra in his Christmas stocking this year, I'm sure I'll get a bill to represent his mileage and et cetera. So, um, yeah, I think we're heading in the right direction and I, I guess. A lot of this is based on his mapping, he said the, the first map he did that I am showing here. Was, uh, very conservative and it looks like it's gonna come out more in our favor. Um, and again, you guys got to see that firsthand. So I'm hoping we can move to preliminary and then maybe shrink down some of these. Lots and get more conservation, um. Uh, area to, to deal with, and Lee, we're going to, um.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance, but it is on my to-do list.
No, that's fine, because I'm still not sure, I'm guessing the minimum is gonna be around twenty-five, twenty-six acres and if. If the soils tests, again, we've gotta get out there with an excavator or small and do some real test pits to size these things. And I know you had, uh, concerns, well, I don't know if they're concerns, but some of them may be duplexes and that's based on the test bits. And that's up to, uh, what those show. Um, again, I, I, I'm really getting more excited again after walking the land twice and I hope the, the board is too. So, is the next thing you send us to preliminary and I?
No, you bring the preliminary to us.
Okay, so at this point, I should be hiring an engineer to do the, uh, roadway design.
Right, we're gonna need the roadway design, we'll need to know where the septic systems are going to be, where the wells are going to be.
Okay.
All, all of that'll be laid out on, on a set of plans.
Okay, so our next hearing, when we leave here.
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, you have, you have six months. You have six months.
I don't have six months.
The ordinance gives you six months.
Yeah, I know, right.
So, um, yeah, no, um, if you have an engagement.
Move, I mean, again, uh, we wanna move, uh, quick enough. Uh, that we get it done right and, and not too quick that we make mistakes, but I think we're. The way you have, uh, pushed us in the cluster, I, I think it's perfect.
I think the, the first thing you should get done is, uh, soil tests.
Yeah.
Make sure that both for well and septic, that they can all fit in, so what's here doesn't, doesn't have to be fine, I mean, we're not gonna hold you to it.
But you might find. Me, he was on vacation and he would do that.
Yeah.
He gets back, I know, I'm just, I'm sorry to.
And then when you have a new arrangement, if it's the same thing and.
I don't think it's gonna change much, but it's gonna change a little.
Good.
And the, and, uh, I'm not clear on your cluster ordinance, but it's determined by what. The acreage is determined by what the test pits show for a lot size.
No, not necessarily, the, the acreage, like Jim was saying, is, it's all the, uh, no, it's all the, the dry land, all the upland.
The upland and then we divide it by whatever and come up with these.
Yeah, there's a, there's a formula in the ordinance and it deals with the soils.
Okay.
Good soils versus bad soils.
Then after that, you, you could have them on quarter acre lots if, if the septic and wells work.
Really?
Yeah, so that, that's, cluster is up to you, how, how dense you, you wanna make them. I, I don't know if it'd be a sellable if they were that small, but.
Unless we put that fifty-four unit elderly house in.
Okay, oh, great, I, I appreciate, uh, your input and it was, what's that?
We probably haven't talked.
No, this is, this is a good size, I always liked, you know.
Yep, you get it, get him to Lee J and we'll get you on the agenda.
Super, so preliminary, you want it as close to final design as possible?
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 the pre, this, the preliminary application checklist.
Yeah.
Will really give you the guidance as to what information is needed, um, it will bring the plan fairly close to what would be a final plan. Unless there are adjustments needed by either my review or the planning board's review along the way. Um, but that will certainly give you enough guidance to get up, get your plan.
An engineer that's familiar with a rental, so.
Um. I can't give you one, I can give you several, but, um, I would suggest that, uh, maybe. Uh, you can give me a call and we can have that conversation.
Or you can email me.
Yep.
A recommendation, cause.
Yep.
It's always better to get someone that's familiar.
I usually like to give three or four so that, uh.
No, I, I don't want any, don't want any conflicts or anything, that wouldn't be good. Super, okay, thanks again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and we'll get back here as quick as we can.
Okay. No, we do the public hearing after. Right, one, yeah, you, you come back to us with the preliminary, we'll probably deem the application complete at that point. Which would then move on to the public hearing and the final process.
Okay.
Okay. Back to Ben. Now it's our turn. Anybody on the planning board have questions? Other than lots and lots. This is new, we brought up a bunch of questions and I think you've answered most of them, I know some of them are in the plan, the lighting and all that. Um. The, the couple of them that bother me is, we've got the barriers, the shooting going on, whether in yours or whoever's, I don't, it doesn't matter. It does matter, it's your, your responsibility, but it doesn't. And this four-wheel trail it's going through, where is that? Is that on your property, is it on yours? And it's on your property. Okay, so the, the four-wheel trail is on yours, the walking trails are on yours, Ben, is that the way it works out?
Yeah, we're creating walking trails.
Okay, alright. Is there a plan to put a shooting range back there?
Absolutely not.
No?
No, in fact, I was just talking to the neighbor outside, um, we're hoping that when they see, whoever's shooting, when they see construction next year, hopefully they'll cease and desist. I don't, I don't have a big answer to that, other than us shooting pistols. Um, but like they said, someone's out there with a, with an AR sounding, a high-powered rifle, so. I, yeah, hopefully they stop, like I said, the sheriff showed up at our place one time and my dad just called me and asked and like, I didn't know. I hope anyone would be out there, but people, I allowed one guy to hunt out there last year, even though there was already hunters there. Um, he approached me and I said yes, um, but he was hunting, so clearly it wasn't him. Um, but yeah, hopefully they see construction.
I understand hunting, but also.
And I've seen the signs.
The shooting range is a whole different issue, right?
Yeah, 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 absolutely, and, and I, I know the metal she mentioned, she said it was on her trail, um, but I do know that it's on my property.
You got the, the, the area like that table and our trail was right behind it, so they're shooting into the trail. And if somebody's coming down the trail, it's a hazard, it's the next.
Hundred percent, so, and my policy right now, like I said, there was chairs out there, there was a shooting, um, metal tin out there. Um, and I can throw it away now, I'll just get rid of it, I just didn't wanna upset the neighbors, I figured that was just a regular place people were shooting. That's in fact why I went out there and felt comfortable shooting my pistol out there, um, cause I know the fellow on New Road that shoots a lot. So me and some friends were out one day with our pistols, but that was once this summer, so yeah, I'll just take that stuff out of there, hopefully they'll see construction and hopefully.
And, and, and.
Be an honor.
I'm much modern enough to know the laws on whether or not you can shoot guns up here or not, to be honest with you.
There's enough space.
And there's people that shoot, my husband shoots, the neighbor shoots, there's a couple houses down the way from my.
Bird shooting at that tin. Yeah.
So, the guy down the way from us had a bird.
Okay.
So, and now they actually go around it, it's because of the young kids.
Yep. And that's, that's my concern is this, this whole boundary issue, how we, what, what's the plan to identify that?
Yeah, so on the, on the boundary, um, the plan is, is really to have a clearly defined property boundary.
Yep.
Um, marking, you know, private property, no trespassing, uh, very well-defined trail system, whatever, wherever the trails go. Making sure that there are blazes and, and marks on there, um, as well as, you know, if there are any trails that pop up from. Private property, the adjacent private properties, making sure that those are marked, that, um, you know, that, any kind of. Secondary trail that ends up being formed by people walking around gets marked and saying private property, uh, no admins.
You're talking about marking your property, looking towards the neighbors, so that people who are camping and don't live there understand that's where the boundary is.
Yeah, and understand where the, the limits are.
Yep, alright.
And, and my trail, which there's a picture of, stays pretty far away from the boundary, people would have to push back to get to that boundary line.
Good.
Um, but yes, the boundary will be in as well marked and so, and the trail will be. You can't get off, so that you won't be able to lose the trail.
So, to the chat.
Yep, go ahead, turn your mic on.
Um, a couple of questions, one is about the shooting. Um, so once you develop this idea of your property, I assume that no. There will be no longer any shooting on the property and you're gonna make that very clear.
Yeah, yeah.
I would assume that your dad in residence, that's gonna do a lot to deter anybody from.
I'm assuming these people might have come on to my property sideways, if they are infesting on my property. Um, I've never seen bullet casings and things out there, I'm not out there all the time, clearly, um, but. But yeah, if, if we have to hang signs and no shooting signs, that's what we'll do, it'll certainly, it can go in my list of rules. Um, I hope I don't have to put it in there and say that, but if I end up at that point. Um, I've already talked to the folks at Hemlock Grove, but, you know, guns obviously never come up, but I, I like to talk to the local business people. Um, he got done with, he's getting done with tent sites in general, just cause the overflow from Benley's and, and he won't let motorcycles in there. I'm not gonna restrict motorcycles yet, but I mean, uh, I think guns are pretty far away, uh, except for someone who clearly lives in the area and is shooting on. Or near my property, so if I get to that point, we'll find, have to find them and figure it out. I don't think it'll be my clientele though, I can't imagine my clientele's traveling around with weapons that they're gonna shoot.
Can you remove that metal?
Oh, yeah, so that's what I said earlier, I'll go out and get rid of it.
You know it's there and I think the fact that it's there.
Invites, I agree.
From global home park, across the street and I see it's vacant, cleared land, I don't know if it's the gentleman. Metal building that's there, but I don't have, but what I'm saying is.
On our cameras, we see a lot of traffic come and go. Um, people just turn around, uh, we don't see walkers coming up the road. That being said, I don't, I don't know where they're, where they're coming from, but we don't typically have much traffic coming up there, coming up our road right now.
Well, I would assume nothing, because assuming makes an ass out of. Um, so I would very clearly state, uh, that there is no shooting and I would also clearly state. That the property is surveilled by cameras and, um, recorded. And I would, you know, hope you have a DVR or some way to look back at those films. To see what's actually going on on your property, so it doesn't erase it as it's filming. I haven't.
I appreciate.
That many movies, but I did.
The DVR.
Live in, uh, LA and cameras and, you know, being very specific about what the rules are.
Yeah.
Is very helpful.
Absolutely, um, luckily, it's one way in and out of our property right now, um, it's very wooded area as you've seen. So, and I used to install cameras for a living when I was a young kid, so the DVR was a fun throwback, they pretty much.
Well, I mean, they didn't mean a DVR anymore, cause nobody uses DVRs, but.
Right, yes.
You know, now it's all on the cloud and so.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's really important that you let people know that, you know, there are cameras all over the property and.
That's the best, the fence is a sign, is a sign saying camera.
Right, and, and making sure your cameras actually work, a lot of people put dummies in and.
We've needed them already.
Anything.
It's the life of living in the city, I guess, I don't deal with it in Kennybunk, but we've already had people come on our property and. Yeah, it's, it's tough, I, I'm hoping having more business there and having a campground and people around, that's gonna, I think that's gonna alleviate. Once you have a presence, cause right now it's just a couple warehouses in a lot of woods, so it's inviting these people that are like, let's go find some woods. Um, and that's what we want, now it's all gonna be blocked with nice trees, nice campsites.
But I think it's to the benefit of your campers as well as.
As long as I scare them away, it's kinda like that machine gun of a storm, right, you know?
People.
Makes you feel good, but does it?
If people leave their campers there and they go out for the day and something happens and something's broken into or whatever, it's to their advantage. To know that you're keeping your property secure for them as much as for you.
Hundred percent, and the storage folks, people storing over the winter, so those are going year round.
The only other thing I wanted to know is, so if there were to be a fence of some kind, even a four-foot fence. Or some permanent, uh, line of demarcation between your property and your neighbors. Where exactly can you show me where it would go on your, um, map? Right there, so. Would it start where the clearing is or would it start below where all the campsites are? You know, where would you, where are all your butters?
The, um.
Where's the concentration of your neighbors?
So this is a zoomed in, um, plan of the development, the overall site is, is much larger and continues further left on the page. Quite a ways.
So your property extends quite a bit.
Yeah, there's a, if you look at the overall site plan, um, sheet three of the plan set, it, it kind of. Gives you a, a reference as to how big the property is, and that's, uh, where the, the trails are shown as well, um. And kind of the buffer between the trails and the adjacent properties, those show the adjacent, um, properties around the site as well on that, on that plan.
And all the houses are set away from my property down by the road, down the road.
Okay, cause that picture is deceiving.
Yes.
Cause it's as if they're almost directly adjacent to.
Our corner lot, but there's a corner lot, but there's a house somewhere which is far in Tasha Road. In the lower middle of the page, that house, is that correct?
But if you can see where they have the trails marked, I mean, there's quite a bit of space between. Your property, your neighbors' property lines and where the trails actually are. So. Okay, well, that answered my question.
And it's, it's rock and woods and it's, um, rock or, rock, woods, wetness.
Yeah, I would just err on the side of, you know, being overly.
Yeah.
Yeah, the more signs, the better, the more markings, the better.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty gnarly, man, that's why I'm trying to make money on the upfront, preserve the woods.
Yeah, so it's, but look at, I think there's quite a bit of space. So, and this is all Phil labbing, right?
Yeah, and, and these will be recrea- or walking Viking trails, no mo- no motor vehicles allowed on them, um, so.
And what did you decide about fire pits and things like that, are you gonna have them or?
Yes, the, the town does require fire pits, I just gotta decide what it's gonna look like and be made out of and run by the fire chief. Uh, when I was thinking large truck tires, but I'm gonna run it by a fire team, so each, there'll be seven. Uh, when I was thinking large truck tires, but I'm gonna run it by a fire team, so each there will be seven.
And what if we decide about picnic tables and things like that?
We are still, um, requesting a waiver for having a picnic table at each campsite. Um, but there are going to be picnic tables on the site and we've marked on the plan the, the location of where the, the common picnic tables would be.
I'm thinking granite, I might just try to pour myself, or concrete rather. See, I'm saying all kinds of stupid things.
Yes, that is on the list of waivers, yes.
Yes, I don't have that right in front of me, but we set up a quiet time that A is no generators under nine thirty.
And there will be electric hookups that, at each site, um. So the, the generated use is, is minimal.
Lee J, did we vote on the applicant, the waiver for picnic tables, do you remember?
I believe you did at the last meeting, yes.
I, I thought we did, but I just wasn't sure.
Yep.
Um, no, I'm at each site, just electrical and then, um, I'm actually, I was just talking to this state, um. Public sector and I might just have one speaker for, um, sustainability.
Any other discussion? Everybody good?
I just, uh, I was gonna answer some of the questions that were brought up as a public, just for the record.
Okay.
Um. In terms of the traffic, um, the trip. Generation memorandum that was included in the application showed that there'd be about, um, eight trips in the peak hour. Um, so eight trips during the, the peak hour, um. And obviously the, the, the traffic out on Alfred Road is, um, you know, significant and. It's kind of an existing condition, but this is a pretty minor, um, traffic generation, um. And does not require any permit with the DOT in terms of that additional traffic, um. And that's kind of the, the process that that would happen through there. Um, on the, this is probably addressed, but truckers are not allowed. Um, eighteen wheelers are not allowed as part of the, um, the conditional use for the campground permit within Arundel. Um, the fences and barriers, uh, we talked about with, uh, posting no traff- uh, no trespassing signs and marking the property boundary clearly. Um. There is, as, as part of the sept- or sorry, the stormwater, um, there's a, um, a pond located in the southern. On the bottom part of the screen, kind of the, um. The darker green area, that's got a, it's a designed to be what's called a wet pond, so there will be portions of standing water in there. Um, as well as, um, flooding areas, um, for when it rains. And so that's, we're trying to make that, um, somewhat of an amenity for the, uh, the campground of. And it's, you know, more aesthetic than just a, kind of a, a dirt pit, um, stormwater basin, so. Uh, in terms of the open water, that's, uh, there will be some on the site as well.
And Chris, is that part of the, um, basic stormwater permit that you're seeking?
Yeah, that's required as part of the, um, DEP requirements for, for stormwater, uh, treatment and chapter five hundred. Um. This lot that's being developed is twenty-six acres in total, uh, I think that was stated, but the. Uh, most of it is, um, up towards Route one eleven and there's quite a bit in the rear. Um, there will be shower facilities and a bathroom in the ten thousand square foot building that'll include bathrooms, um. Laundry facilities, showers, um, and for the campgrounds that'll be open to the, the, anyone staying at the site. Um, lighting has been, uh, professionally designed. There's a maximum mounting height of twenty feet, um, and that's really. That's gonna be on the buildings as well as one light out at, um, the intersection by Alfred Road. Though, there's some lights at each campsite. Those are designed to be, um, softer lighting, um. And obviously, and, and it's also designed to not spill over on any adjacent properties. Obviously, people staying there, um, don't want a lot of light shining into their campground or in their camper and trying to sleep. So that's gonna be, um, you know, on the applicant to make sure that that is an appropriate level of lighting, um. There will be a dump station, um, that's been included with the septic system design and it's been sized for that. Overall, um. It's a, it's relatively a pretty small septic system, not much larger than, um, in terms of flow, not much larger than a, a large house. Um, about double, two or three houses combined is what the size that we're looking at. Um, and a, and has been sized for, we've done the, gone through the design, there's an HHE two hundred form and including the application. Um. And in terms of someone being on site, uh, I think Ben mentioned previously his father is gonna be living on there. Um, so there will be a, a presence, not necessarily, um. Twenty-four, seven, but you know, normal comings and goings of someone living on there on a daily basis, uh, to monitor. Uh, and then in terms of transients coming on to the site, I, you know, I think just having more, um. More business and more people there is gonna, uh, try to deter, uh, people from just kind of sneaking on some vacant land, so.
So I have one other question. So the bathrooms will be locked, is that correct? And so each camper will get a code. Uh, that will, and will those codes change? And so if a, if you check in and you're there for a week and you've got a code for the showers and. The bathrooms, then when you leave. Does that code continue to be active or do you give each, do you change the code? Every time someone gets access to those bathrooms, and I hope it's the latter and not the former, but anyway.
Yeah, I have to look at exactly how that system works. Like I said, I used to be in that industry, I like that industry, um. But we'll, um, definitely change them every week and hopefully I can, the system can handle as many codes, a new camper gets their own code and then it gets erased and. Um, that would be ideal, but. Which would be nice.
I've seen it done with a fob.
Yeah, well, and even cell phones, um.
Right.
You can just ping your cellphone and open the door and that's the way a lot of, um. Places are doing it now too, and again, now you know who is in there, which is pretty handy, which also deters. Uh, people from doing things they shouldn't.
Well, it also tells you who has been there.
Yes.
You know, it's like an accounting system.
Yeah.
Everybody who works in the office gets their own access to the accounting system.
Yeah.
Because then you know whoever has made changes, whoever has been in the system.
Yeah.
You know, uh, what they've done as an individual instead of the entire group having one ability to get into the. Into the program and out of it, so.
Yeah.
That probably wouldn't be a bad thing for you in the event that you have vandalism, you'll know who was in there and who wasn't, so.
Well, that's a great benefit of technology. Yeah, no, I definitely plan to have a, a good system there along with my, um, audio video system.
Back to those cameras.
Back to the cameras.
Yep.
Yeah, no, it's an unfortunate truth, especially with all the new people moving into our state.
No question.
Okay. If there's nothing else. Findings of fact, number one, the property is located on Heavy Hammer Lane. Number two, tax map for lot twenty-three and twenty-three C. Number three, zoning is Alfred Road District ARD. Number four, the size of the parcel is twenty-nine point seven acres. And the development proposes to cover four point eight five acres and one point nine acres of impervious surface. Number five, the site will have a private drive, private well and private septic system. Number six, the applicant is required to obtain a chapter five hundred basic stormwater permit from the main DEP. Number seven, the planning board will hold a public hearing on August first. Conformance with conditional use criteria. After review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the. Criteria of section nine point two point nine of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. Nine point two point nine point one, that the use is compatible with and similar to the geographic categories. Of uses of neighboring properties.
Jen.
We need to, uh.
We normally vote on every one of these. Uh. Okay. Motion was made for nine point two point one. By Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, nine point two point nine point two. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood. In that the zoning in this area is a commercial zone and the emerging development in this area is commercial when fronting on Route one eleven.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth, this. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, nine point two point nine point three, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to. And into the site to accommodate the anticipated traffic to and from the use. There are currently no pedestrian facilities along Route one eleven, a state aid road. The entrance meets the site distance requirements. The applicant has provided a traffic impact study. Supporting the site access and trip generation for the proposed use. We'll have this discussion.
Are you gonna approve it? I'll, I'll second that.
A motion was made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth, discussion?
Yeah, it is a danger.
I think, I think the left hand coming out is gonna be a lot more dangerous th- than going in.
Wonder if, uh, how would we get that message to select not move.
Well, they can get it to the selectmen too.
I, I don't, I don't think we can. I think that would be, I think that's something that, uh, MDOT would have to. To dictate.
Yep, so Mr. Chairman, I'll jump in. Okay, excuse me. First, I can certainly communicate it to the town manager. Um, of the concerns have, that have been raised, I'm sure he will pass it on a select board where it goes from there, I don't know. Um, Mrs. Doobie is correct. Um, I actually, um, sat in on the scoping meetings with the main DOT and the applicants. Um, for the Bitterford projects is actually two projects that are proposed in Bitterford. And, um, at the time, um, of that, um, clearly my intent was to try and. Convince the DOT along with the traffic engineers that a light would be appropriate at New Road. Um, and the DOT through their study, um, with the consultants. Engineers indicated that the warrants, there are certain warrants that have to be met. Um, for numbers of vehicles taking left-hand turns out of intersections, uh, numbers of vehicles going straight. Um, how long is the delay for someone to come out and go left? Um, DOT found that the warrants were not met to signalize New Road. Um, so I think it's gonna be very difficult for the DOT to, although they should be made aware of it. Um, find any warrants being met for any, um, additional. Traffic mitigation issues at this location. Especially since they issued the original, um. Um, access permit to, um, Heavy Hammer Lane.
So make a lot of noise and write your letters, make your phone calls and see if you. You know, can't get some action.
Oh no, all those were, all those were considered as part of the background information because one of, yeah, one of the things that they ask of. Of all of the parties involved is are there other projects out there? That, um, may not be in the ground yet but are being proposed and certainly all of that information was provided to them. Yeah. They look at all of the background traffic is what they call it and.
I, it's nutty. We were just talking about the light. People were going around the people that were waiting.
The, the day that started, I had to sit at Limerick Road because I have to make a left to go down into Alfred. I couldn't, if people hadn't stopped, I'd have still been sitting there. Okay.
So. Okay.
Is, is there, is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Nine point two point nine point four, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. The applicant is required to submit a septic plan design to the code office prior to permits being issued for development on the site.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Nine two nine five, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration or smoke. Generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties. The site application proposes to ha- to have two warehouse style buildings on the property and a small camping area. To support traveling RVs passing through the area. The sites are not for extended stay.
So moved.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Nine two nine six, the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soils, drainage and vegetative cover. Are suitable for the proposed use. The site is gently sloping and has some noted ledge and non-significant vernal pools and wetlands. The area proposed for the development is not impacted by any environmental constraints. Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Nine two nine seven, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. None. Foreseen at this time.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth, discussion?
Would you like it there or would you like it as a condition of the approval?
Conditions of approval. Any other comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. That all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards are met. All such performance standards have been met.
So moved, oh, second.
Move but, motion by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Roth, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All site plan review applications have, shall be evaluated, approved. Approved with conditions or denied based on the following findings of fact. The proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards. Specified in sections five, nine and ten of this ordinance. The applicant has requested a waiver of the campground standards to require picnic tables at each site. The applicant indicated that this type of camp facility is not conducive to having picnic tables at the sites. B, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits, yes. C, the proposed project shell does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection. And will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement. To the project site and the neighborhood. The fire department has reviewed the application and has no comments. D, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. The applicant has a significant stormwater study completed and submitted. Site will have a stormwater pond associated with the development to accept all stormwater runoff. E, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff during this. From the site during a twenty-five year storm event. And will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. See question D above. F, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact. Upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. A traffic impact study has been submitted by the. A traffic impact study has been submitted by the applicant which supports this project. G, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhoods, surrounding environments or community. The applicant has received a nat- a natural resources study and identified all wetlands on the site as well as vernal pool locations. In doing so, the applicant has designed the site to minimize impacts to these identified areas. The proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction or other nuisances, nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. None have been identified. The project, I, the project, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government. None has been identified. The applicant has met all the pertinent portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance in the design of the proposed activities. Based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board approves the site plan review and conditional use application as herein presented contingent upon the following. Number one, the applicant shall provide a cost estimate for the site work and provide a surety in the way of a letter of credit, bond or check equal to the amount of the site work. Once the work is completed, the bond can be released to the applicant. Number two, the applicant shall comply with all written materials submitted to the planning board as part of this application. Number three, if blasting is to occur on the site, a pre-blast plan shall be submitted to the planning department prior to the start of this construction. Number four, and this would be the sign for Lijay.
Signage will be placed around the abutting properties to keep campers on the campsite property.
Thank you.
So we will add that to the findings of fact and have it circulated for you folks to electronically sign?
Yep.
Okay.
That will work. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board on August first, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations. As soon as we get this typed up, we'll get it signed and sent out to you.
Brilliant. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And then on to bigger and better things. The town planner has a minor change to the subdivision regulations related to the fee schedules.
So, yeah, so I don't know if it's bigger and better things, but um, as you recall, um, you folks had approved um, a significant change to the subdivision regulations a while back regarding um, fire suppression systems and how that would be handled. And in the interim, we've gone back and um, um, at the request of the select board, we have increased our fees um, for development applications significantly. I don't have that fee schedule in front of me, but it's a significant increase. But in doing so also, there were some minor amendments. Um, and I've got the red lines here if you want to see them. Minor amendments relevant to uh, fees being submitted, relevant to um, third-party review and how that would be handled. Um, actually going through staff um, to hire a third-party reviewer or inspector if needed. And um, there was one other change. Oh, um, change that um, Mylar are no longer accepted with the um, York County Registry of Deeds. Everything needs to be now on uh, white bond paper. So I needed to change that in the ordinance as well. Um, and I believe Ann provided you copies of the updated ordinance, um, maybe not tonight, but I think you got it in your packet.
Yes.
So making you aware of that, um, I don't know if you have to vote on that or not. Um, since it only comes to you folks for acceptance, but there's nothing of major significant changes to that.
But it, it is a change to the ordinance, so we probably should vote on it to accept it.
Yes.
Uh, but you're right. My understanding of it is that it, it is a, a very de minimis thing from our point of view and we have no control over the fee structure, so.
Correct.
We just, we just need a motion to, to approve those changes. Motion by Tom McGinn to approve the changes to the subdivision ordinance, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. I would like to take this opportunity to express my condolences to Donna De Kinderen. Her husband passed away. John passed away. Um. Don't know why, don't know, don't know any of the details. I just found out this afternoon that he had passed away, so I you know, if, if you get a chance, drop her a note.
Um, also, um, you have in front of you um, an invitation to attend um, an update on all of the new laws um, that were um, approved through the legislature this session. Um, Jensen Baird Gardner Henry, um, actually I think they just call themselves Jensen Baird now. Um, law firm puts on um, a night of going through all of the municipal laws that have been changed over the last year and how they may impact municipalities. Um, they provide a free dinner um, at the Doubletree, I believe it is, um, up in South Portland. Um, quite honestly, I know you guys, you, you folks got this here, um, but I know Jensen Baird is not your primary um attorney here. Um, so if you do want to take advantage of it, please do so. Um, Jensen Baird happens to be S M P D C's attorney. Um, so we get the invite anyway. I plan on being there um, with some of our other staff. Um, and it's very well attended. People from all over the state come. Um, people actually make trip down from the county to uh, to hear um, about all the changes to the municipal laws, so um, please feel free, feel free to register and, and attend if you can.
So I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, is, can we move to change how we do findings of fact?
Sure.
Because we, having to vote on each one unless there is an issue.
So, um.
That's, that's just a carryo- the only reason we do that is it, it was a carryover from, for the past eight years.
Yeah, so, so this is, this is how, how I interpret that. Um, I think if Leah was sitting here with us tonight, she would say, yes, you should do that. Um, and most attorneys do say that. Um, I get a little um, more liberal in my interpretation because there is no law that says you have to do that. It's, it's based on, well, if this thing goes to court, you want to make sure you have voted on each one of those findings. If you think the project's fairly um, innocuous or is not going to um, be very controversial or that you may not um, have any of the um, findings that you're going to deny um, yourself, then you know, you can be a little, a little more liberal in that in um, making a motion to approve the findings as presented. And. Yes. Yes, um, you can do that. I certainly did that for years, um, when I worked in the city of Auburn. Um, they, actually, we didn't even do significant findings on many projects. It was just the, the list of the findings and that's what they voted on. I would not do that anymore. I certainly think statements are important to, to um, address each one of the issues. But you can do that. You don't have to necessarily vote on each one. Certainly, your attorney is going to tell you differently, um, because they want to make sure every single finding is covered.
Well, that's, that's the reason that it started initially. We had an applicant that two of the conditions failed by different people because they would, we all wouldn't agree on, on certain terms and, and if any one of those fails, the application fails.
But you can ask if there are any findings of fact that people have, if there are.
Have any concerns, yes.
Right, and if there are, there are, then you take care of that.
Yes.
Aren't, you could do a communal vote at the end of the reading.
Well, again, I, I, I would agree, but again, I think part of it is also, you know, what is the sentiment of the public? I mean, we certainly have many projects where no one comes to oppose or to raise questions. You know, I think that's fairly safe. If folks are here and have questions that are very valid questions and issues, you know, that's a different story because they're, you know, they could walk out of here fine tonight and file a, you know, an appeal tomorrow. Um, so you know, I think a lot of it really depends on, on the project and um, how you think it's all coming down.
Because some of them are long and onerous.
Sure.
Some of them were duplicated in.
Yes, they are. Um, but don't forget, that one was just going through both site plan and conditional use.
Right.
Which is another change I'm going to be proposing to folks for next spring.
Not a problem.
Hopefully the change is to, um, I, I won't get into detail at this point, but to um, basically say all conditional uses require site plan review. And um, that way, everything just goes through site plan review. Um, yet all the performance standards for each one of the uses that have conditional uses will still be in place. So there's not two processes for the same outcome. Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Did anybody come up with any ideas in the ordinance that you would like to look at or change or add to or take away from?
And then uh, some other uh businesses, some teams like, who require, they, they don't want it, they don't need it, but still require them to do twenty-five spaces.
Right.
Look at V I P, right? I've never seen that in one floor. There must be six or seven. You might see twelve.
Yep.
So I, I, I thank you for bringing that up, um, Tom, because um, one of the things that I happen to notice going up and down um, Route one as much as I do these days now, um, is that the other example um, of a uh, compacted gravel parking lot that I'm assuming this board, well, some facsimile of this board approved in the past was the miniature golf. Um, which is not very different than the, the Frisbee Golf across the street. That parking lot is also compacted gravel. It is not all paved.
Right, but, but that, that's, it's a seasonal.
Yes.
Which is how they were able to get it in that way.
So anyway, we could certainly look at, at making some sort of a modification to that to make it much cleaner. Um, the other one that popped up recently, actually it was as early as today, is that um, the state law says um, that if someone needs a handicap accessible ramp to their home, basically, um, that the um, that the Board of Appeals shall grant a variance for um, for um, violation of any front yard setbacks. And one of the things that, that I had done years ago again was um, when that law came out was said, well, if it says shall and requires it to be approved, why are we making someone go through that process when they may need a handicap ramp? You know, in a fairly quick manner, coming home from a hospital or something. So um, you know, we can change that if there's a desire to do so just to say that, that the um, code enforcement officer shall um, grant a building permit for a temporary ramp. And once that ramp is um, no longer in use, it has to come down. Um, that way you're not making someone go through a Board of Appeals process for something where the state says you shall do.
Oh, okay. I, 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 I feel better because I was trying to think of, when did we ever tell somebody they couldn't have a ramp?
Well, probably not. It's just, it's the process of making someone prepare, plan and, and hire someone to, you know, go to the Board of Appeals to request a variance that the state really already says you have to grant.
Yeah.
It's kind of crazy.
Yeah, it is. So yeah, if we could, we could make that change, it would be great.
Yeah, so by doing so, then people would know that they could do it as long as it was on a temporary basis and they didn't have to go through.
Correct.
The steps in order to get it.
They'd still need a permit, but yes, yep.
It could, it could be a permanent basis.
It could be.
I think you have to do.
You know, I mean. Well, I, I don't know. Would they, would they have to go through the process? Because we just heard the state law says you shall allow them to do that. It, it didn't say anything about temporary. It just said, you shall allow them to have that ramp.
Right.
So I think we should just say, if you need a ramp, you can temporary take it down, but you can get it permanent without having to go through.
Yeah, I mean, permanent is, or permanent or temporary is as temporary or as permanent as it needs to be.
Yeah.
Um, the, the intent of that though is if, if someone passes away that no longer needs it or someone sells their home, then that ramp would need to go away, but it would be permanently on the front of property until there was no longer a need for it.
I'm so glad my ramp was inside my garage. It's, we've got this great ramp. It works out really well.
Anyway, those are just a couple of little things that we can certainly put on the, on the radar.
Alright, well, I move that we adjourn.
Don't need a second. Don't need any discussion.